Call to the meeting's order and we'll start with the Vice of the Legion. Please everyone stand.
The Legion to the class of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invitation and be past. It's online so please sit. Thank you, past. The dons for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before you in humility and we pause to recognize your sovereignty. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings and we thank you for every gift which we have received from you. We ask for your hand of blessing to be upon this meeting this evening. We ask that you would guide and direct these leaders of our community and that this meeting would be full of wisdom, productivity, and a respect for one another. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. A roll call back, please. Mayor Tavano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Leger?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeats?
Present.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Elke?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Today we have some special guests here in the first two rows over here. My mayor's youth council has come to observe the meeting. Thank you all for coming and we can have a nice discussion at our next meeting on what you saw here, okay? We appreciate your observation. And let's see, we'll start with my report. First, I have a brief public service announcement. Our Maricopa County Sheriff's Office will be conducting a training exercise on Saturday at the closed Four Peak School. This is our unique opportunity for training in an actual school building to better protect our students, teachers, and school staff. On behalf of our town government, I recently reached out to the superintendent of our public school, Tom Lawrence, and to Karen Noah, principal of the charter school, to offer a working partnership with the sheriff's office and the rural metro fire department to create a safe environment here for our students. So when you see the activity at the Four Peak School this Saturday, just be assured that it is strictly a training exercise and we hope that these skills will never actually be needed here in our community. And there's a rumor that Steven Seagal will be there, but you didn't hear it from me. You got that reaction. Congratulations to Brian Dewes, Supervisor of Recreation for our Community Services Department, for the prestigious honor of being named in 2012 Professional of the Year by the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association. Brian served as president of the association and helped to solidify the group's financial future by promoting that group and their efforts statewide. This is one of the highest honors that the organization bestows annually and it is very rare for the president to receive this award. Congratulations, Brian, from the entire council. All right, now out to my mayor's report on my representation outside of Fountain Hills. I attended the Greater Phoenix Economic Council meeting on Arizona's current trade relations with China. CTEC is currently working with seven cities in China. Most of the industry is right now focused on solar, so they intend on expanding their trade connections. I was present at the swearing in of the new state legislature and I thought it was important that I be there to get acquainted with the new representatives and senators and it was nice to see my husband once again get sworn in. The special guests with us were the sheriff and also Dr. Clinton Hattia, the president of the Ab'apai Nation, since they are now with us in District 23. They're part of our new district. I also attended a rural metro event with our upper management and I heard a lot of praise for Chief Baraka and Randy Roberts and Captain Todd Brunin. Also, I want to extend a congratulations to Captain Todd Brunin for receiving the Liberty Mutual Firemark Award. I joined my fellow East Valley mayors for a monthly lunch. The host was Heritage Valley Mayor Scott Lamar. We discussed several important issues, including the changes to the construction point of sale and architectural procurement. And out of that lunch came a meeting organized by Mayor Jim Lane of Scottsdale that I attended to discuss the changes to the transaction for Lloyd's path, which would be very detrimental to Fountain Hills. Attending that meeting were two other mayors and representatives from other cities and towns, representatives from Allee City and members of High Ground. I also attended the Maricopa Association of Government Monthly Board of Directors meeting where we discussed transportation issues for the valley. And that's my summary up to date. Thank you. I have an announcement that the consent agenda items number eight and nine have been removed and put on the regular agenda at the request of council member Dickie. Right now we have some very special presentations. Recognition to a member of our Board of Adjustment, Gary Glunt for his service. Is he here?
He is.
Can you see him here? Okay. Well, I will read Gary's name on our Board of Adjustment. He served from March 15, 2012 through January 31, 2013, completing the term of a board member who had resigned. Mr. Glunt was a valuable member who contributed his knowledge and capable decision-making as a member of this board. We all thank Mr. Glunt for his contributions while serving on the Board of Adjustment and certainly for all the time that commissions put in. I also see Nancy Machnamara also being recognized today. Nancy Machnamara has served the Senior Services Advisory Commission very well during her term of office. Nancy has a wonderful way of being enthusiastic and friendly to everyone. Nancy is very involved in the community and we look forward to working with her in the future. And our last recognition is for Grace Jacobs. She has been a contributing member to the town of Fountain Hills for many years. She was the driving force to name the office of Senior Services the John O'Flin Senior Activity Center. And we thank and wish the best for her in the future. Where are you, Grace? Oh, there you are. Hey, come on up. Grace cut her hair. Did Bob, do you want to take a picture or do you want to? Nope? Okay. All right, now we are up to rotation of the Vice Mayor position. As you know, according to the Fountain Hills Town Code, Section 232, we are required that every elected council member serve as Vice Mayor during the members' elected term. We thank Vice Mayor Leger, turning back into Councilman Leger, for his service as Vice Mayor during his term. Thank you. And we pass that along to Councilman Kate Elke, who is now Vice Mayor Elke. And we will ceremoniously. Call to the public. Do we have any calls for public speaker cards?
Mayor, one speaker, Peter Bordeaux.
Welcome, Peter.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Longtime Fountain Hills resident, twenty plus years, brand new Fountain Hills retail business owner, about five days now. Sidewinder cycles on Colony Drive. We have our grand opening on Saturday. And Mayor, I think you'll be there and Sheriff Arpaio will be there. And the reason I bring this up is not just for shameless promotion, although that's a big deal. I want to thank you for renewing and increasing the contracts with the Business Incubator folks here in town. I know I've said this before, but I want to say it again and I'd really like for everyone in town to know this, is that these guys in the incubator really know what they're doing. Their guidance, their counsel, and their wisdom really enabled me to open this business here in Fountain Hills. It's been amazing working with them. The subsidy from the town really makes a difference. And for the money that the town is spending, I think it's somewhere around $4,000 a year, something like that, I really hope to pay twice that much in sales tax to the town for all the business we're going to do. So it's a good investment for the town. It's good for the people, it's good for the economy, it's good for me, and it's good for everyone. So really, thank you very much and all of you, please come Saturday at noon to 17005 Colony Drive. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter. All right. Our consent agenda items, we have seven of them. First, consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from January 8, 17, and 24, 2013. Number two, consideration of approving Resolution 2013-08, abandoning certain public utilities and drainage easements located at 15721 East Grasslands Drive. Number three, consideration of approving Resilience 2013-10, abandoning portions of the certain public utilities and drainage easements located at 16863 East Harland Drive. Number four, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Robert D. Smith, representing the American Legion Post for the purpose of a fundraiser scheduled to be held on February 22, 23, and 24, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Number five is consideration of approving an application for extension of premises patio permit, temporary change, submitted by Merida Creja, representing the Euro Pizza Cafe in conjunction with the Bandidos Mountain to Fountain 16K event to be held on Sunday, March 10, 2013. Number six, consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Cheryl Wood, representing the American Legion Auxiliary Fountain Hills Unit 58 Incorporated for the purpose of a fundraiser to be held on February 22 and 23, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and February 24, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the last one is consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by Robert Bo James, representing the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7507 to be held on February 22 and 23, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday, February 24, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And I have a motion to...
Mayor Calmuth?
Are there any speaker cards on the...
No, ma'am.
No? Then I will need a roll call, please, Beth.
Councilmember Yeats?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson? Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Tavano?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Okay, we'll start our regular agenda items with the two that were pulled up with the consent agenda. The first is consideration of allocating $7,500 from the Downtown Development Fund for the Cyclovia Fountain Hills event.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I pulled up the American Trails website, which this event's kind of tied to, so people can take a look as I'm seeing my presentation. Before you tonight, a request for $7,500 from the Downtown Development Fund for the Cyclovia Fountain Hills, a new event being coordinated by the Town of Fountain Hills in cooperation with Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau. The event, which focuses on health and wellness, is scheduled for Saturday, April 13, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and includes a closing concert in the park beginning at 4:00 p.m. It is also serving as a kickoff event for the 21st American Trail International Trail Symposium being held at Fort McDall by Nation from April 14 to 17, which the Tourism Bureau was instrumental in getting brought to our area. For those of you who don't know what Cyclovia is, and I'm sure there's a lot of people because I had no idea until this event came about, it is the Spanish word signifying the temporary closure of a network of streets because they can become open to people who bike, walk, and participate in fun, free, and healthy activities. So it's really a health and wellness event which is really important in this day and age of obesity, childhood obesity, and other issues related to healthy activities or non-healthy activities. You can see here from the Trails Symposium, I'll go to their Symposium site, it's really already promoting Fountain Hills and the Fort McDall area as well as this event, which is, I know it's here somewhere, right at the top. Where is it, Mark? Is it? Ah, that's right.
In fact, this is...
I just saw it. Well, you know what, we'll just skip it because I know the link's there, but... So folks can see more about this. Anyway, this website's really helping to market the event already. But the event's estimated to bring over a thousand participants to the downtown area, including visitors to Fountain Hills, especially those attending the Symposium. Staff is requesting $7,500 from the Downtown Fund in order to help fund the logistics for this year, including but not limited to the street closures, portable toilets, tents, tables, chairs, staging, inflatables, and event security. The Visitors Bureau is funding marketing for the event, such as the website here, including flyers and posters. In addition, the Visitors Bureau is also funding the closing concert this evening, including performances, sound and lighting, which the Visitors Bureau has funded, or identified up to $10,000 for this event. So this event meets the goal of the funds that were set aside in the Downtown Fund for creation of new events that benefit the downtown area. So with that, we brought this request before you this evening.
Did I hear you say a thousand people?
A thousand or more, we're hoping. But with a first-year event, you never know, so that's the estimate.
I'm sure our business community is thrilled about that.
We hope so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brian, Councilman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for bringing this forward. Just I thought it'd be good publicity, plus I just wanted to ask, the $10,000, I spoke to you before about that, that the Visitors Bureau is budgeting for it and I look at the contract that we have with them right now and they have $7,500 budgeted for the International Trail Symposium. So just kind of two questions here. One is, are they the same, are you considering the Trail Symposium, the $7,500 there, as part of this event, the $10,000? So that's my first question. And the other one would be, is this $10,000 then considered out of the funding that we give to the Visitors Bureau, that the town did to the Visitors Bureau? So that we get kind of a clearer picture of where each of these things are coming from?
Well, the overall event, when we started with the original budget, was estimated somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000 and we've kind of been dialing that back as we get more details defined. But as far as the funding that's coming from the Visitors Bureau, I asked Mark McDermott to be here this evening so he could specifically answer that question for me. So with that, if you don't mind, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you.
Sure, Mark, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mark McDermott, eighteen years resident and director of the Visitors Bureau for the past seven or eight years. Yes, I appreciate the question. It really is two separate budget items, Councilperson Dickie. The one is, first of all, in order to book this conference, which is about a thousand persons expected to attend the conference, the host community had to do, had to come up with certain host community requirements. One of those was to be a sponsor of the event itself, okay? So that involves a great deal of exposure that we receive. You saw the website, they also, I think it's over a million hits a year. There are several pages on the website that expose Fountain Hills and link back to our own website for additional exposure for those that are interested in the destination.
Sorry, Mark, just so I know, you're talking about the Trail Symposium?
Talking about the Trail Symposium specifically right now, for which we have $75,000 in the budget this year for the sponsorship of that per se. In addition, they have a nationally distributed magazine, which is distributed to several, their circulation, I believe, is about 50,000 on that and we have received one, several exclusive to Fountain Hills and all of the state of Arizona for that matter, articles and editorial about, you know, the host site and so forth. There's a great deal of value regarded in that as well. So this is sort of a sponsorship, sponsorship in the area of conventions and meetings tourism, if you will, which we don't get to do a whole lot of, and that which we do get to do is usually related to major conferences that have to be headquartered over at the Rennett's in Fort McDall and of course, the tribe is also a funding partner of the Visitors Bureau, so we're happy to help them book things in that regard. They did need a designated formal destination marketing organization to lead the way on the bid proposal for that in order to get it and we were happy to do that, to help them with that and to come up with the money to help sponsor. They need to raise many, many, many thousands of dollars to conduct this event, so we're participating in that regard to the extent of the money that we have left in for that sponsorship. Now, what happened then next was in conversation with them, they came up with this idea about a Cyclovia event and it just struck us as the kind of event. They are very familiar with Cyclovia events because they have one in their hometown community in California. What's the town? Franciscan, can you remember? No matter, but anyway. And they're aware of these events and they support these events in communities in which they operate, in which they have communications and so forth. We like the idea because it really sort of fits the mold of what we're trying to do in terms of promoting this community as a health, wellness, fitness, vibrant type of community that has a specialty in each setting that is very conducive to all of that sort of thing, the desert experience that we offer out here, all of the biking and running and hiking and trail work and all that sort of thing. It fits perfectly with us in terms of, I tried to use our whole new image and branding campaign to brand this community as a health, wellness, fitness, artistic, cultural, vibrant community. So we said, you know, isn't it fair that part of the mission of the Visitors Bureau is to help create new events, to draw people to town, because obviously that's tourism as well. So we pulled a committee together. We have a committee of some 25 people, includes members of the council, includes former mayor Miles, former mayor Karen Morgan, includes leaders of the civic community, leaders of the cultural community, leaders of all aspects of our community. We've been working on this for about a year now. We started last May. So, but in order to pull off an event like this, as Brian said, we originally expected we might have to spend something like $30,000. We've been working on cutting the cost down as low as we possibly can. We knew the town probably couldn't come up with too much, but we did know that there was an event fund that maybe could be utilized for that. We got some early indication informally that that could be possible and we thought it a worthy cause for the Bureau to dip into if funding a little bit if it needed to. Now, we're selling sponsorship to the event. We've already raised over $1,000 in sponsorship. We hope to raise upwards of $5,000, $6,000, $7,000. We probably can't expect too much because it's a first-time event. You don't know what the attendance is going to be. There's no history to provide to potential sponsors and so forth. But we hope to raise enough sponsorship that we'll only have to come up with a few dollars out of our own budget. Is that town funding? That's your key question. It's hard to say because we don't, I mean, certainly a good portion of it would be. I'd say half of it could be called town funding, whatever we do spend above and beyond sponsorship dollars because, you know, we receive funding from the town, from the tribe, a little bit from the chamber and other miscellaneous revenue sources, such as, you know, sponsorship development, things that we might sell, some funding from the state as well. And we don't, we are not required to and we do not absolutely stipulate how we're spending the funds from each funding entity. It goes into a revenue and we apply our expense budget against the total revenue that we receive from all of those accounts. So you could say, hey, town funding is approximately 55% to 60% of our total funding, so whatever we wind up spending in terms of a few thousand dollars over and above whatever we raise in sponsorship will be 50% to 60% town funding. It'll amount to a couple thousand dollars, something like that.
Then another question? Vice Mayor?
Next nine months, Mayor. Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. And Mark, is this done in conjunction with obviously the Visitors Bureau and the town? Is there any type of admission that's being charged? And then the sponsorships that you're speaking of, is the Chamber, or excuse me, the Tourism Bureau, is that the entity that's, I guess, sponsoring the event? I know you're asking for a contribution from the town.
Right.
Okay, so are we expecting, depending on, of course, those in attendance, make some revenues off of this event? Is that...
There are no revenue generating activities at the event that will accrue revenues back to us. The only revenues that we'll possibly receive will be through the sponsorship. And we have a sponsorship entity, the Chamber is a sponsorship development firm that it uses to develop the sponsorships that it receives for the Great Fair and the Fountain Festival. We're using the same firm, it's also the same firm that produces our Visitors Guide, so they know us well, they know Fountain Hills well, and they know how to produce these sorts of things. They will do as good a job as can be done, I'm sure, in developing sponsorships for that, so hopefully we can largely offset whatever we might have spent from our town and our tribe and our other revenue sources with sponsorship.
Well, it certainly sounds like we're getting a lot of publicity online with a million people going to the Trail Symposium website and learning about Fountain Hills.
Correct.
And I'm sure that our restaurants and our stores are certainly going to benefit by having all those people come downtown. And we're going to have the streets closed, is that correct? The streets are going to be closed?
Yes.
And it's going to be children's activities?
Madam Mayor, it's our intention for this to grow to become a third major event in Fountain Hills and to draw thousands and thousands of people, not just hopefully a thousand as well at this first one as we go along.
Councilman Dickie? Mayor, and maybe this is for Julie, the contract that we have with the Visitors Bureau has certain things that are expected. You wouldn't say then this $10,000 is coming from that same amount of what's expected from the contract? I wanted to speak clear whether it's the $7,500 or whether it's the $17,000. I'm all for this, I just want to make sure that we're really clear on what the town's contribution is or if it's at all affecting the contract that we do have for the $103,000. Mayor, members of the council, when the contract was awarded to the Chamber for Tourism, the event was not anticipated at that time, so it would not be spelled out as something that would be included within that contract. So the event was for tourism-related activities, it was for website design, that's what the contract was for. So does that answer your question?
Yes. Basically, it's just that nothing that was in that contract has been compromised by the $10,000. That's kind of what I'm getting at. Mark?
Councilmember Dickey and members of the council, I would have to say no, I don't see that because part of the job we're charged to do by the town is to sponsor events, to bring people to town. In some cases, this is just a case that's a little bit unique in that in sponsoring this event, we're also creating this event. So we also see it as part of our mission to create new events, to bring more people to town. So it's essentially an event sponsorship with a creation component to it. Now, we'll spend $3,000 or $4,000 marketing the event, but we would spend that $3,000 or $4,000 marketing our events anyway. And that's part of the $10,000, so that's the way it works.
Oh, Councilman Dickie?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm just looking at the strategic plan and you obviously fit several categories here, including economic vitality, public safety, health and welfare, recreation opportunities and amenities. So kudos on that. And the $7,500, will this affect our existing budget? I mean, there's no downfall here as far as stealing money from robbing Peter PayPal or any, excuse me.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Yates, no, this was money satisfied specifically for a new event coming into town.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if I may, just to further clarify, Councilmember Yates' question. In our budget, you may recall, we had a special events fund in our excise tax budget for fifty thousand dollars. So, which were not defined events. So the seventy-five hundred dollars is coming out of that fifty thousand. So actually, we have a surplus rather than a deficit.
Thank you.
If I can do this. All right, any other questions from the council? Do we have any super cards on this item?
No, ma'am.
No, we don't. All right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
May I have a motion?
Please, thank you.
Second. I move, I move that Councilmember Yates buy lunch for a... I move to approve...
Got you there.
I move to approve the allocation of additional funds for the two thousand thirteen cyclovia Fountain Hills in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars from the fund associated. Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing the issuance of a request for statements of qualification for promotion of commercial business in Fountain Hills. I'm gonna go right to Councilmember Yates just so we can explain exactly what this is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What this basically is, is a free market solution to a public sector problem. How do we reach out and attract businesses? And when I say businesses, I'm not just talking retail, but actual office space, industrial manufacturing, and of course, retail space, without hiring a new person, without spending staff time, when we already have a system in place called the free market. Right now, if you have a building or land and you wanna sell it, lease it, rent it, whatever, you hire a commercial real estate broker. Right now, if you have a business and you wanna find a space, you hire a commercial real estate broker. All I'm asking is that the town will hire a commercial real estate broker to represent the town so that when new businesses are looking to move somewhere, we're on that list. And when new businesses call the town and say, hey, I'm interested in Fountain Hills, assistant manager, I'm sorry, Deputy Town Manager Julie or Town Manager Ken will have someone to give to. And the beauty of this is the free market pays for this. There's already a commission in place, whether it be on the buyer broker's end, meaning a business pays their broker to find them space, or the land or building owner, they already pay a commission. So if this succeeds, it, it does not cost us money. And even if this doesn't quite work out well, it still doesn't cost us money. But I, I have a pretty good feeling it's, it's gonna succeed 'cause the chatter we're getting in the press, and I've had several brokers ask me, when is this on the agenda? It is something new, a little bit out of the box, but the downside of this is, or the, the downstroke is very minimal. But I entertain any questions or additional discussion on...
Does Councilwoman Dickie have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for taking it off consent. Seems like a kind of a mouthful for consent. So I wanted to ask you, Councilwoman Yates, about the, on the scope of work to seeking qualified commercial real estate brokers. And I, I don't know what you consider commercial as opposed to, would there be an opportunity, say, if it was a nonprofit or a, or educational or even a governmental entity that wanted to rent office space? Would that include that in that definition?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember, remember Dickie. The term "commercial broker" is kind of all encompassing. Anybody who rents, buys, leases, or does any kind of business. And the term "business" is arbitrary. It includes nonprofits, for-profit, you know, sole, sole proprietor, all the way to C Corp, S Corp, you name it. One of the brokers that I work with on a continual basis almost specializes in nonprofits. And that's kind of where some of the ideas came. They move, they use office space. Several of them, I'll use Goodwill for example. They have a for-profit business model which supports their nonprofit entities. And that's, that's kind of the, the way this goes. So yes, that would include everybody.
Thank you. So if we just enter into this with a, an organization, would that be like something that we would bring back here as like another agenda item and, and be able to talk about that? Or any of these, the scope of work or any of the other items on this scene? Do we have opportunities to discuss them?
Madam Mayor, and I guess Deputy Town Manager, or maybe Andrew, the RFQ process, could you walk us through that? Once it's sent out there, I'm hoping several companies apply. What's the next step?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, the RFQ process contemplates that at the end of the evaluation period, when the selection committee decides which one or more brokers are going to sign up with, whatever form of contract we're going to use, we'll come back to the council for approval at that point.
Thank you. And I noticed you said "or more," so that was my other question. Is this, is this exclusive? Or there, there are opportunities for people to, to come forward if they'd like to do it?
Madam Mayor, at one point, we were talking about, okay, whoever the best retail broker is, whoever the best commercial, manufacturing, et cetera. But it makes more sense in the industry to get a, a team together. So we're looking for a team that does all those services, and there are several out there. That way, you don't get the, you know, hide your cards and, well, somebody called me for retail and I do manufacturing, but I'm not gonna give it to you. I'm gonna give it to my guy. So we are looking for a team, and I think it will work out better.
I wanted to call you by phone. Now, I got it.
Yeah, it's, that happens. But just thinking about three more years, you know, you can recondition this, so... Well, if I'm here.
I have a question for, for Councilman Yates. One is just a, a point of clarity. You used the word "hire," and I know that was just a bad choice of words. I think we need to make it perfectly clear that we're, we're not paying for this service. So when we use the word "hire," it sounds like we're hiring someone. And my second question is that I've had some, some interest in, in this community regarding this and some questions about... So my, what I close to you, or Councilman Yates, is what impact, if any, would this have on local commercial brokers or realtors that may be concerned that we're going out of house, so to speak, perhaps out of town, for this particular, particular service? Could you address that, please?
Yes, excellent question. In a perfect situation, when somebody lists a property, they're hoping to, to get that sold by themselves so that they get the hundred percent commission. But whoever the listing agent is, they always put in their agreement that they'll split that. Thirty percent of something's better than a hundred percent of nothing. So if we have somebody representing us and get two other entities that are licensed agents together, they work amongst themselves to split whatever that commission is. As far as excluding anybody, no, not at all. If any, anything that exposes, you know, some of the local agents to a much broader base that they, they by themselves might not be able to. And, and I'm sure you can think of several right now that have a dozen listings or more in town. For them to go out and kind of get on these lists of some of the buyer brokers would be somewhat difficult. So I think it'd be a, a welcomed addition.
Mayor, if I may, just, just a follow-up. So just, just to clarify, if an, if an in-town commercial broker, realtor was, you know, landing a project, I mean, then they're, they're in it for their commission. They're not sharing it with this outside group. The south side group doesn't have dibs on, on their piece of work.
You are correct. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, just a question. Um, and Mayor, I don't know if this is directed to you or maybe to Councilmember Yates. Do we, do we have the selection committee put together already at this point?
Madam Mayor, all?
No.
No.
Okay. And then Andrew, with the dates on here, it looks like we've got some dates. Do we know what those new ones are going to be? Might say the dates on the first page of the Request Statement of Qualification. As far as the release date, the final date for inquiries, which is January thirty-first, this is just going out now, right?
That's correct. And this was prepared in anticipation of an earlier council meeting. So all of the dates on the first page will be adjusted by the three weeks or so that were past the schedule.
So each one will be about three weeks further. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, are there any super cards on this?
No, ma'am.
All right then. Can I get a motion?
Oh, I think, well, I didn't want to move my own motion, but...
Go ahead.
I move to accept, oh, I missed my page here. I apologize. I move to extend the Statement of Qualification for Promotion of Commercial Business in Fountain Hills. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
And now we have consideration of accepting and approving the placement of a bronze sculpture titled "Look to the Mesa" in the community center lobby. And this is a gift from Eileen Helgerson, a local resident who is with us today. Eileen? To town from Eileen.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, joining us also this evening, representing the Public Art Council, is also a couple other familiar faces. I'm sure Mr. Miles and Sandy Thompson. This particular piece that I'm gonna share with you is, excuse me. This is a picture of it there. It is of a hopi maiden. And as you indicated, it's being donated to, to the community. It is scheduled to be potentially located in the lobby of the community center. There is a site map that I included in your packet. This is a bronze sculpture, and in the diagram here, item eight is after the dance. That would simply be moved, if, as you're looking at the screen, to the left. And actually has been moved to, 'cause we wanted the Community Center Advisory Commission to take a look at this particular location. They did that. We had this item on their agenda for the January twenty-second meeting. They indicated that they were supportive of not only the acquisition of the piece, but also the placement is being recommended. Staff has also recommended both these, the acquisition of the piece and the placement. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have.
Mark, how tall is the piece?
It is, I believe it's listed as fifty-three inches. And it is fifty-three inches and it's twenty-two inches wide. And so the, the piece that you saw earlier, that's actually photoshopped in there. There's actually a little bit more space on either side than there appears, a couple inches on each side, 'cause we did measure it, just to make sure it was, was intact set there.
And is that the base that's gonna be sitting on?
Actually, it has a base on it already. And so it's a completely self-contained unit. There's no other cost base or anything else. So this is one of those acquisitions that literally, we have no cost whatsoever.
Any questions on that piece, um, place, Mayor?
Just a, not really a question. Mark, did you just step to your right just a touch? Thank you. Ms. Elia, I just wanted to thank you for donating the piece. I mean, this is fifteen thousand dollars, I understand, when you first purchased it. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the, the donations. And we have a wonderful collection of art pieces, in, in no small part to those two that are sitting here last as well. So thank you very, very much.
Yes, and it's, uh, it's that Eileen explained this is part of her collection. And she didn't want to just keep it to herself, but she loved the community and she wanted to share it with everybody. And this is, this is certainly a great way how to do it. And we are very thankful for your donation and to the Public Art Committee for bringing us another great piece. Are, are there any super cards on this?
No, ma'am.
Is there any other council discussion on it? Um, can I get a motion to accept the piece? Councilman Brown?
Mayor, I move to accept and approve placing of the bronze sculpture titled "Look to the Mesa" in the lobby of the community center. Second.
All right. Any other discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you again on behalf of the town of Fountain Hills for your generous donation. Consideration of initiating an amendment to Chapter Six, Section Six Point O Eight, signs of the zoning ordinance. And Julie is... Over there. Julie and Andrew, throw your votes together.
Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Staff was asked to come back and bring back to the council a clarification on Section Six, Six of the zoning ordinance as it relates to banners. Um, the staff would be Bob Rogers and Paul Mude, who works with our town attorney, Andrew. Unfortunately, both Bob and Paul are sick with the flu. So with your permission, I'll just turn it over to Andrew.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as we talked about at the last meeting, this is the embodiment of trying to make this section as clear as possible so we never have to talk about it again. I'm hopeful that's what we have now. The text is mostly the same in the areas that were not specifically discussed before. But I decided while we were cleaning it up, let's just make it actually read better, too. So if we have, if this meets with the, the understanding of the council, then what we'll do is initiate an amendment. It'll go down to P and B, go through the public hearing process, and be back in front of you probably, I would imagine, April. Be about the timeframe that you'd see it back as an ordinance to adopt this change.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Any comments, questions from councils?
Andrew, a question for clarification. Section submitted, is it D, C on, can't tell which page this is, but it's the first page of the packet, so it's a... Can you, can you define what it means by, on a periodic basis with, with advance notifications to town? What that, what that encompasses exactly, what periodic basis and advance notification means?
The, the staff had a process by which permits weren't necessarily issued for this type of sign, but notification of when these events were going to happen was required so that they can make sure that there weren't outdoor activities or other things for which the site plan was necessary. Uh, periodic basis was just the best that I could come up with, to try and figure out how to describe these two-seven day periods that were possible each month. So I didn't really have a better term than periodic because we weren't certain that it would be every month, two-seven day period. It may be that they do it three times a year, two-seven day periods. It's really just impossible to tell.
Yeah, it just seems, again, and I, I know as lawyers, try and be as clear as you, as you can, but you can always, you could probably read periodic basis. If you have ten lawyers, probably read it ten different ways. But I would suggest maybe not having periodic basis and then leaving it to the, the business owners to come to the town with advance notification to the town for not more than two periods of seventy consecutive days per month. So that it's not putting something additional on there, especially for the non-lawyers reading what does periodic basis mean. In the advanced notification as far as the town, as I understood before, if I'm recalling correctly, if there was a banner that was attached to the building, there had to be some type of approval for safety purposes and that sort of thing. How, how does that read into advanced notification to the town? Is there not an application or something that needs to be submitted by the business owner so that we know what it is and when it's going to be up?
Administratively, that's really what it, it turns out to be. And it's not necessarily an application like we might have for a signed permit, but it contains a lot of the same information. And I think Bob even does them by email back and forth, which is a PDF file. On your first point, I'm, I wonder if, to distinguish it from one A, which is the one-time basis, do we want to maybe say recurring? Because I wanted to make sure that we have a distinction between the long-term one-time banner and the returning as many times as they want to in a seven-day period.
Yeah, I, I have a question about when you said business community, because the banner could be someone other than the business community requesting it. Not only the business community, it could be a group.
If, if it's not advertised, well, if it's not advertising for the purpose of an event, and it's not a commercial business or a church or a group, if it's just a person wanting to have the sign, it's not, it's not advertising, not covered by this code. So it's only those entities, like commercial entities or nonprofits, that would be covered by this in the first place.
So it's gonna cover churches and all of that also?
Um, sorry, may I ask me? Under Section D one B, it, it deals with the church for a search for up to thirty consecutive days for the purpose of promoting a program or event. And, so is that thirty consecutive days, one time a year?
Well, this is the current language in the code. And when we talked about it before, there didn't seem to be any consensus or direction from the council to modify that provision. It really is unlimited with respect... It really is unlimited with respect to churches in this, the, the way the code's been currently interpreted.
So, so a church may, if, if I may, ma'am, um, so a church could have it up for thirty consecutive days, take it down for one day, then put it up for thirty more days, take it down for one day, put it up for thirty days, et cetera?
Under the, the current language, it could. And it's, uh, I don't believe that that has been a concern, uh, for enforcement over the years, but it certainly is possible.
Okay. I would just like to, to see, um, as far as clarification with the advanced notification to the town, because I do understand that that can be in the form of an email and I wanna make it as easy as possible or as straightforward as possible. Um, but, uh, I, I don't know what's the notification. I guess Bob would probably be the best person to answer that question as far as procedures like doing, unless you know how that application process works.
Um, yeah, um, we actually met today and talked about that, um, ma'am, ma'am, members of the council. And the notification is for, to allow for the, the business to come in with their banner and there, there's a requirement that they have to give the sign where it's going to be placed. And then we have to put it into the system so that the clock starts ticking on those seven days. So we can do it, um, we determined for no more than a year. So they should come in and apply once for the whole year. That would be the maximum.
Yes, and I believe that the business person has already done that and worked that out with Bob. So I just kinda, assuming I'd like to go to Councilman Hanson, if I'd like to...
Oh, I was gonna point out that, that confirm is kind of covered under the characters here, where it says the type of event and sign type. And it's, where it's added any type of event or promotion, it clearly says that it, there's no permit necessary and, but the town notification is required. So I think it indicates that, you know, we don't need to have this formal permit process.
Anything further from anyone? Any super cards on this item?
No, I'm Linda Bordeaux.
You're good. All right. Is that, was that the only one? Any further discussions? Yes, Councilman Lozey.
Uh, ma'am, if I may, uh, address the town, um, attorney. So what I'm hearing you say on C, that's gonna be changed from periodic to recurring?
Madam Mayor, uh, council member, Lozey, that is, uh, that's my recommendation that we, we have something to distinguish it then from one A.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense. I'm comfortable with that. I also wanna point out, um, with respect to not seeing this again, which has been a theme up here for a couple of years, um, that there's a, uh, subject clause here. So it looks like we will be taking a look at this on, uh, just around Christmas time in two thousand and fourteen. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't, uh, seeing double here by looking at this. Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion. Motion?
Mayor, I move to, uh, move this to planning and zoning for their review.
Second?
Uh, any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Here's six one.
Do we need a roll call vote on that? Do we have?
Six one, we had one again.
I guess we need a roll call vote then.
Do we don't?
Hmm? Oh, okay.
Who was it?
I didn't, I just heard the number. Okay. All right, then I'll move on to number twelve. Consideration of possible directions to staff to contract with the International City County Management Association, the IPMA, and the National Research Center Incorporated, NRC, for the national citizen survey in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred dollars. Okay, uh, Julie?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. One of the council goals for this fiscal year was to conduct a statistically valid citizen satisfaction survey. Consider the survey as a baseline and tie to performance measures utilizing the IPMA, um, standards. IPMA is the International City County Managers Association. The town had previously conducted two surveys in two thousand and five and two thousand and seven that were designed to elicit responses regarding the proposed strategic plan and what residents were willing to pay for. The survey was in concert with the proposed strategic plan and was targeted to half of those who participated in the strategic planning process in the town hall. And the other half, meaning four hundred of the eight hundred, was random. To accomplish the objective of measuring the level of satisfaction of Fountain Hills residents and utilizing the results to benchmark for future, for the future, staff is proposing to initiate a customer satisfaction survey that is administered nationally by IPMA in cooperation with the National Research Center. The survey is utilized by cities in Arizona such as Scottsdale and Novales, and you have a copy of the Novales survey in your packet, and can become a benchmark for future surveys and is designed specifically for use by local governments. Because similar surveys are conducted in hundreds of jurisdictions, Fountain Hills can compare the results with other cities locally and across the country. The survey can detail the Fountain Hills' specific needs while utilizing standardized questions and allows for the creation of free policy questions that are entirely specific to Fountain Hills. It is staff's recommendation that utilizing the NRC to administer the survey is a cost-effective and efficient use of town resources. The survey is basically a ten key operation, yet provides data on how we can assess our community needs and assessment of resident satisfaction with community amenities and government service provisions. The basic survey cost is ten thousand three hundred, and that includes twelve hundred, twelve hundred randomly selected households. And that includes two pre-survey postcards and a mailing of the survey instrument. If we wanted to expand the survey to three thousand residents, that would cost an additional seventy-one hundred dollars. And if we wanted to add a web survey in, in addition to that, it would be another nine hundred dollars. So what staff is proposing, that if, if the council's direction to move forward with the NRC, staff will work with the council to create the survey, or work with NRC, to create the survey instrument and then distribute to the council before it is put out to the public. So, um, what we're looking for is whether the council wants to go this route as opposed to, um, issuing an RFQ and going through that process with a consultant. And then if so, do we want to have this, the basic survey? Or do we wanna expand it to three thousand? Do we wanna add the Spanish translate, translation? There are some options within that survey. The twenty thousand three hundred was just kind of a, a suggestion. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Um, okay, go ahead, sir.
Julie, just as a matter of, uh, process, is, how effective is this? Uh, I've got a marketing background and it seems that, uh, direct mail is, isn't as effective as it once was. Do they have any numbers indicating what kind of response we can, uh, expect and, and the validity of, of what we get?
Um, mayor, members of the council, it is a nationally recognized surveying company. And so I think what they say, out of twelve hundred, you can expect around four hundred and twenty-five back. And that's pretty much standard. And, um, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Just the validity. So a thirty percent return, but that seems to be standard for the industry?
Yeah.
And, and they feel you can extract a valid, a valid stance on, on the topics that we're discussing?
Uh, um, again, that would be the, the standard norm. And I, I think that, um, in order to make this, the survey statistically valid, there has to be some control over what is sent out and what they get back. So I think the mail is probably, they can do telephone as well. If we choose to do telephone, it would be cheaper. You might lose some of the statistical validity because you lose some of the control. But it's an option that we can do as well. And I think that costs us six thousand dollars.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was, um, pretty much one of my concerns too. And I, and I did eat you about it earlier today, um, about the mail issue that they have to send out a postcard and then people know it's coming. And, you know, with all the amount of mail that people get, I'm just wondering, for this price, how many people are gonna actually open the mail, sit down, do the survey, mail it back? It just seems like people don't do that kind of thing anymore. It's more emails or, or even a telephone, I think, would be, you know, better than a, than a mail. It's, it's just, do they do any type of an email?
Um, mayor, members of the council, I didn't see where they perform any part of an email as far as the, the survey, because again, the, you have to have the control of the how, what, who gets what so that you can create the, the, um, the grouping and that it's pretty valid, that you've got a good, good census of the people that you've surveyed. There is a web option, but, you know, they indicate that you can have a web option as part of your survey, but it doesn't get counted in, in as the statistically valid. And, and the other part of it as far as the mail is, you know, if you promote it and you let people know and it's getting ahead of it and letting people know who are, that it's coming, that you might have a better return.
Do they know, do they say what, um, you said out of twelve hundred, it might get four twenty-five? What kind of response do they get from telephone? Do, do you know?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
If it was more. I just, I just know that mostly groups, can you have me?
They got the, the, with some data collection of six thousand dollars. And the survey is conducted by phone instead of by mail for four hundred completed interviews. So basically, it's the same as if you do the sample size of twelve hundred mail, getting four hundred responses.
Okay, all right.
But, yeah, ma- mail is, um, telephone's a lot cheaper, right?
Six thousand dollars.
Yeah. Do we have a super card?
Yes, ma'am, one card, Linda Bordeaux.
All right, I'll start with a super first.
Hi, good evening, councilmember. I'm, I'm, ma'am. As y'all know, I've done quite a bit of work and diligence on this. Um, and so I now actually have three vendors that are interested in, in bidding on this, this, uh, consumer survey or customer survey. All three of the vendors that I've spoken to over the last, uh, week are confident that they can complete the same work, the same survey, uh, for less and have a lot of experience in these citizens-type surveys. They've, they've done municipalities, large and small, uh, for quite a number of years. In fact, one of the guys that I talked to, like, I heard his name is Mike Noble. His business is MB Two Last Consulting and Stance for More Better Quicker Faster. I'm gonna kick out of that. Um, but one of the things that he was telling me too, um, was that most of the vendors that are local will know the area. Fountain Hills, um, is kind of a unique situation. We have, you know, it's an end of the line for a lot of things. We have an interesting demographic. And that's something a national firm doesn't have the same, uh, relationship to as a firm based here in Arizona. It also would help keep the money in the state. Um, they can do future comparative, um, surveys as well. When I met with Ms. Daddie over this, uh, last week, one of the things that was, uh, a favorable, uh, aspect of this is that two, three years from now, we can go back and say, okay, do this survey again, how are we doing? These folks, all three of the vendors can provide the same service. Uh, most of what they're doing would be a call or an actual in-person, face-to-face survey of a statistically, um, accurate survey. Um, all three of them said, what you were just iterating now, was that the mailing list is the least effective of all of them. They have a less return rate than most. So if we look at the proposals that Ms. Daddie submitted, for three thousand pieces of mail, um, you're gonna get about a net return of a thousand. That's if they were, came in at a third, sometimes they're a lot less. When you think about mailing two postcards in a survey, you can be up to three dollars. Most of these surveys are correlated and calculated via, um, programs, computer programs. So what you're looking at is two hundred dollars per survey. That's kind of expensive, I think, to find out how the town's doing. Um, let me sit here for a second. Um, one of the goals of the survey, one of the important places, building trust in the government and all of that with the citizenry. So I think it's a, it's a golden opportunity for right now, like you were suggesting. They said, is it an RFQ? Is that the right term? Okay. For the, for the town council to put this out to bid. Um, that way the, the citizens would absolutely know that we were getting the best bang for our buck. Um, and especially considering the fact that we just laid off several people, um, the staff, and we've had to reduce some of our staff from full-time to part-time. So really, every dollar matters for us. Like I said, we've got the widest amount of answers, so we can really get what's going on in town and how to make that better. Um, I've known about this only since, well, I think about eight days ago, when I met with Ms. Daddie. And, uh, since then, I've had, I've been able to talk to the vendors, but eight days really isn't enough time for them to drill down and give me an exact dollar figure. The best they could do as, at a first test was, uh, to provide, some of them said, um, they could provide all of the same metrics that were in the package presented to you. And my largest vendor felt that they could do the same exact work with independent questions from you, the same metric for between eleven and thirteen thousand dollars. And that was just the first layer test. So I'm gonna implore the council to table this for maybe two weeks, maybe a month, so I can get with each vendor, so they can actually give me, uh, uh, like a firm response on what they should actually do. I hate to leave like a, like a wiggle room in there between eleven and thirteen thousand, so.
Okay, councilman.
Uh, excuse me, yeah, thanks.
Are, are we done?
Do we have more?
No, no, I'm, I'm pretty much done. That's all I wanna say, other than thank you. And, you know, I'd be willing to, again, I've given a lot of time to this, so I'd be willing to continue to do that, to make sure that we get the best possible survey. And, you know, I'm willing to whatever it seems. Okay?
I know you've been working on this for a long time.
I have. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Well, we appreciate all the work that you put into it and, and...
Oh, let me just give Julie a, a thank you, uh, publicly. She was able to give me a heads up and provided me with the information a day before it went online. So that was helpful and thank you, Julie.
All right, councilman.
Um, Mr. McGuire, would this be a situation, since we have a scope of work, that we could just do an RFP, an actual request for proposal? Or would we have to go the RFQ route, request for qualification?
This is a, a price-specific proposal. This would be a request for proposal that would ask the vendors for both qualifications and price.
So it could, madam mayor, so it could, so we could do one step instead of just going with, you know, grande market research, there would be a number along with it. Right, thank you.
My turn. Okay.
Thank you. Well, let's not forget too, we, we do contracts for our town attorney. So whenever we put an RFQ and RFP together, there are costs associated with that, with that process as well. Um, I'm certainly interested in hearing what the public has to say, and we often do. And I would invite certainly any of those that are listening tonight, if we can get four hundred and twenty-five people to call and let us know what kind of job we're doing. We could save a lot of money. I apologize to the front desk folks in, in advance for all the phone calls that they may get. But if we can do that, um, it'd be great to save twenty thousand dollars or whatever the amount's going to be. I certainly think it is important for us as a town government to know what the people are saying and what they're thinking. But if I were a venture again, and I'm, you know, statistician, is that right, statistician?
Statistician.
Statistician, thank you. Um, it's probably gonna be Sora Boulevard, Fix the Roads, continuing where, where certainly well along in that way. And, um, being a town of limited resources and means right now, I would be more in favor of putting this on the back burner until some future date as opposed to spending more money on surveys and studies similar to my position on the traffic study that we, um, voted on not too long ago. So it's kinda, kinda where I'm coming from on that. Thank you.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, mayor. Just from my knowledge, uh, Julie, how much would an RFP cost? How, what does it cost to go to the RFP process?
Um, mayor, members of the council, there's a couple issues with the cost. One is the cost, obviously, of the legal time to, to review the RFQ. The other is the cost and the staff resources to, to put this together, to put the scope of work together, to come up with what the questions are going to be and, you know, get the groups together to do all that. So there's the staff time and then there's the legal cost. Uh, I couldn't venture to guess it's more time than it is dollars.
Three thousand, twelve thousand, just dummy, shot in the dark?
No, no guess?
No guess.
Sorry?
How much was it for the, um, for the one that we just put together that we just had some time? I'm forgetting, it was on the agenda.
The buyer's broker?
Broker. The broker, how much was the broker, if we know yet? Have we been billed for that yet?
I can't remember that yet, come on.
You did, sorry, sir.
No, zero.
I, I don't know that we could give you a, a good estimate based upon that particular RFP, because, because that one was unique. This would be much more like the ones that we do on a regular basis. Uh, it would come from one of our paralegals at a much lower rate, but it's probably a few hours of her time, you know?
And...
Few hundred dollars.
Few hundred dollars?
It'd be, yeah. It's curious, thank you, mayor, if I may. I, I also have to agree with councilmember Elsie. I, I, vice mayor, I'm sorry, sorry about that, I know, I know. So if we, uh, I, I believe that we should, uh, set this aside for, for another day and discuss it later. I feel like we've got, uh, bigger fish to fry. So I would say we should table it, is that, uh, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Terminally?
Yes. Now, councilman, this is...
Thank you, mayor. Um, so I don't know, I wanna risk everybody agreeing with the vice mayor here. But, um, I did wanna ask about when we had a retreat and we kept coming back to this item and it kept being something that we kept saying we wanted to do. I'm actually okay with not doing it right now also, but just to kinda clarify to me, this, this... I'm actually okay with not doing it right now also, but just to kinda clarify to me, this, this, cause this would be a switch in what we thought was a priority during, um, probably a couple of retreat sessions and that we wanted input. So as we're going forward with other things, we're certainly reshuffling the cards a little bit. And is that kinda what I'm hearing, that even though we are still feeling that it's important and it really kept rising each time we met and talked about it? That is there a feeling here that I'm, that I'm hearing that maybe we don't wanna do it right now?
Uh, well, I, I know that this goes way, way back because before I was here and Councilwoman Yates was here, this was decided that there was going to be some survey and since then, that's how long Linda's been working on it. Was there a particular reason why it was decided that we needed the survey?
Uh, Mayor members of council, it actually came out of the retreat and it's part of the strategic plan, one of the initiatives in the strategic plan is to, um, solicit citizen feedback. So that came out of the retreat. That's in, I don't remember when, August, no, before that.
And when was the last time we had a survey before that, was it?
We had two surveys, um, one in two thousand and five, one in two thousand and seven, and again, both of them were, were very specific. They weren't general customer satisfaction surveys. They were geared towards, um, you know, how you felt about the strategic plan was one and the other one was geared towards what are you willing to pay for. So it wasn't a true customer satisfaction survey.
Anyone else? Uh, councilwoman McAdoo.
Thank you. Um, Julie, for basic services, it was, uh, ten thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, what, what does that consist of? Could you, uh, elaborate on that?
Uh, my understanding, uh, Mayor members of council, my understanding is that consists of the twelve hundred mailing, um, follow-up phone calls, um, reporting box, but it doesn't include like demographic information if you wanted to, you know.
That's nine hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay. So basically, the basic service is eleve- eleven thousand dollars. And you're talking about ICMA who sets the standards in municipal governance. They've done this hundreds of times. And, and to be compared to normative data that they own, that someone else doesn't own, is extremely important. And when you look at methodology of surveying, what they will do is they will send out a basic survey. They will do it by demographics in this town. They will do it by age group. They will know how many numbers that they need returned to have something that's statistically significant. And if they don't hit their mark with the basic, um, uh, the, the, their basic package, then you can begin talking about expanding your sample group and going out. So you don't necessarily have to commit to that on, on, on the front end. And, um, you know, I'm all in, it sounds like the, 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 the scenario here is to move it forward. We have a citizen that wants to bring, uh, forth more information. I'm fine with that. Um, you know, we've been talking about this forever. This isn't a very difficult task. And a base survey from the top-notch group in the United States that does this work, that sets the standards for, for municipal government, their base price is extremely reasonable. And, um, I won't get into the methodology and, um, how many different ways they'll, they'll, they'll split this up. But, um, I frankly looked at it and thought, good group, good history, good product, good service, turn around, be done with it and, um, you know, off and running and get, uh, uh, citizen input. We've talked about this since basically following up since two thousand and seven, so help me with the math. So that's, 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 that's been a while. So I don't think this is, um, very unreasonable at, at, at all. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Julie, this wouldn't be an addition up and above the budget. This has already been budgeted for some line item?
Uh, Mayor members of council, yes, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may, just, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go first.
So if, if we continue this conversation, I admit that are we looking at RFQ and RFP?
RFP, and then what you said?
Okay, so, so the question was asked of our, of our deputy earlier, in an RFQ proc- in an RFQ process, you know, it's obviously set criteria. Um, I, I actually had a phone call on this last night from a local vendor. So you, you're, you're gonna get a lot of RFPs. So it, the, the legal time in putting this together is not the issue, um, cause I've been through this process before with, with a previous strategic plan. It's sitting down and hearing all these things and then probably having to, uh, to select a handful of them and then begin interviewing them by phone. So this, this, this RFP downright is, is not a slam dunk. And it's, and it is, and it will be labor intensive depending on who's applying, how many people, how many qualified people you have. So a town an indirect cost that can, can get to be pretty high. Uh, and still we won't be flying people in from across the country, uh, as we've had done in the past, but, but costs can really add up. I think Councilwoman Yates who has an interest in that. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I do think that the twenty thousand dollars is an awful lot to spend right now myself. And I know that they gave us some examples of some surveys about the one they ran for the city of Nogales. And just looking at the questions that were asked, I have to agree with Vice Mayor Elsie that I think I could, I think we pretty clearly, I think we know what people are gonna say about quite a few of these. And while, while it's good to, I know that, that you have all planned to have a survey long before I was here, but, uh, with the money being so tight and with, I'm just looking at these questions, you know, thinking, how much are we gonna actually learn from some of this? I, I know how what people are gonna say about the overall condition of the city streets. If I don't know that by now, I'll never know, uh, and what people think about the traffic lights and, and, uh, walking in the paths and all that. It, it seems like they have a lot of basic questions that they, they seem to ask for all the same towns. And actually, you know, we're pretty different from Nogales and all these other cities and towns. And if I were to do a survey, I think I'd rather have something that's a little bit more, um, a little bit more for our town, cause we're unique, we're different. I don't think we're anything like Nogales or, or any of these other cities and towns. And, and I don't think I, I would get much out of the results of, um, of a survey like this. So if we were gonna go for a survey, this survey in particular, I think I wouldn't be in favor of doing that at this time, uh, actually at all. I think we should just save the money, but that's my.
Mayor, if I may, and I, and I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, interestingly enough, the questions are, are questions and we probably know the answers to most of them. And, and frankly, the questions, basic or complex, are, um, are really less significant than the methodology. Because we wanna be able to come back and say, we know that this is a random statistically sound survey and feel that we have a high level of confidence that we know what's happening. I mean, right now, we get a lot of feedback and we have sometimes a vocal, um, minority that appears to be the majority in this town. And, and, and you don't cut through that unless you have a good methodology in the survey. And I, and I know it sounds bizarre to say so, the questions, the what are not as important and how this is done. So I'm comfortable looking at other, other vendors, but at the end of the day, it's about methodology and how confident we can feel that this is a representative sample of this community. And you know, that's a really hard thing to get. And we would have that challenge during these strategic plans because ninety percent of the population don't give us feedback about anything. And we need to hear from a random sample that is statistically sound so we can feel with a level of confidence that we can move in a certain direction. And that was the level of confidence we have with the strategic plan and we felt very confident of investing money and time in saying the strategic plan will be our D-north. It will be our compass because we know it's statistically sound. So, um, I'll get off my soapbox, but I think that that's really important going forward, whoever we look at or whatever we consider. Thank you so much.
And, and, and I do, and I do agree with what you say about something being statistically accurate. I just, I don't think that mailing to anybody is, is gonna come back accurate because it's just not done anymore. And even political surveys that candidates do who are very particular about what comes back, nobody uses mail anymore because it just, it just doesn't give the accurate results. Um, email, then you're saying, well, there's a lot of people that don't have email. Phones, a lot of people don't have phones anymore. So I think anyway you're going to do this, you're, you're gonna be hitting, you're gonna, you're gonna be reading some groups out. So, you know, the question is, do you wanna spend money and, and get back? I, I still don't, don't think these questions are gonna be helpful to us. Do you feel safe in the neighborhood, you know? Um, what do you think of your fire service? I just don't, I just don't think to just spend twenty thousand dollars just to ask, you know, what do we? I know a lot of times there were other surveys done in the past, just that we did ourselves with focus groups. Then of course, that ended up with just whoever showed up at the focus group, who could come, who would come out in the morning or who would come out at night. And so that's not statistically accurate either. I, I just feel that I wouldn't get any, any great knowledge about the community for this. And I certainly don't think that a mail survey, I, I would probably consider maybe putting this out as an RFP and maybe looking at the best possible way to get the best results at the cheapest price, certainly not twenty thousand dollars.
Does anyone else want to, uh, Councilwoman Brown, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I could get behind an RFP. I was under the impression that it was more costly than, than what you're explaining. If it's a minimal amount, I could certainly get behind an RFP and, and get our feet wet and see what we can get for the dollars. Uh, I have to agree, I'm not prepared to spend the two, twenty thousand, three hundred dollars, budgeted or not, but I would be interested in seeing what we could achieve with an RFP.
Yeah, and, and I, Linda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, cause you did so much research on this. But I think that if you, if you put it out and you don't use a company like this where all the questions are, are kinda set, you can, you can pretty much direct to what type of questions you want, if you wanna keep it more towards your own community. And knowing the, our, our community issues, we could include questions like that that just specifically relate to our community. Yes, ma'am, you would have the option to ask additional questions, just like was provided in this survey, included in that, I said, I gave you, as well as the fact that they have standardized questions. Julie wouldn't have to sit there with fun and go, okay, what do we wanna ask now, right? There's a standardized pamphlet of questions that you can go to and say, hey, we'll take that, 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 that. So it's a pretty streamlined, fixed service. And again, you can come up with specific drill-down questions that the council would wanna know about.
And then we could, we could put in questions that are more related to our community.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, councilwoman.
Real quick. Andrew, so to put together a scope or we just use the scope, cause I'm feeling if we do do an RFP, hopefully something new will come with a better methodology or a better way to reach or, or something like that. But if our baseline is, is this, then we're just kinda gonna get the same, but maybe a cheaper way or to do it. So I guess my question is, what would be the next step theoretically to do it if you an RFP?
Well, I believe that the staff would need to, to generate a scope of work for the, the, the company to frame what was being requested so that we would know exactly what results you're expecting to, to achieve. Um, it would have to include, uh, some direction as to what kind of survey methodology the town's looking to utilize. Um, and whether or not there's a, you know, baseline to the question, how much customization is allowed or provided for by the vendors. Any number of those things are what the staff would have to generate in order to create a scope of work to frame the question for all of this.
Anyone else? Uh, councilwoman. Tessa's had a minute for a long time. Tessa's gonna have to be a little more aggressive.
She has no voice.
Can't be aggressive. Um, I agree with Henry, what he said a few people ago. Um, I don't think this is something that we should put on the back burner right now. We've got too many issues coming up before us. Um, we can think that we know what people in the community think. But as Henry said, that probably doesn't include ninety percent of the people in the community. And I think we need to do the means possible to reach out to those people so we have a better handle. Um, we know, and just for an example, the, the roundabout and, you know, people wanting to vote on the roundabout. And we know we can't vote on the roundabout, but that's just a separate issue. But I don't think we can let this go by the wayside. If we wanna go a different route, I don't have a problem with that. But I think there, there has to be a reason that it did come up on a continual basis as a priority. The desire that we do wanna reach out to our citizens and get the best sampling back that we can. Asking questions that are as objective as possible and making sure that we don't get in the way and, and trying to ask things that are, that, how, that, how, we don't want to dictate what the outcome is. We wanna make sure that it's done professionally and very objectively.
Councilwoman.
And, uh, Mayor, I move that we direct staff to issue an RFP, well, I'm sorry, to issue a scope of work and then an RFP, unless we need to look at the RFP prior to going out. Thank you. Mayor, if I may. Question I pose is that.
I have a motion to have a discussion. Second, alright. Go ahead, I have a motion to have a discussion now.
Now we can have a discussion, thank you, thanks for slowing me down. Um, the assumption here is that, that staff becomes the expert in terms of developing the scope of work. And you, you've come full circle again and Councilwoman Hanson just said, then we start dictating the process. You gotta let go of it. You gotta find an expert out there, whether it's someone that, that's recommended or it's ICMA. You need to let the experts that do this work for profession tell us, this is, this is the, the best way to do it. And these questions are just, most people are gonna come up with the same questions in terms of latitude. The other side of that is that, um, um, you've got, uh, I keep hearing twenty thousand dollars. It's not twenty thousand dollars. The base survey is, is ten thousand dollars and then those are add-ons. And if you look at what we needed to generate during the strategic plan to be statistically significant, and then was rather high. And that was accomplished through, um, mail surveys and then follow-up of those individuals through, through phone calls to get those mail surveys back. Why? Because that was part of a targeted group so we could stratify the data. If you look at the strategic plan, as I'm sure some, someone here has probably drilled down on, you will see that was stratified by age group, by, by section of the town. I mean, any question you wanted to know, it was bulletproof in terms of developing your own, your own strategy moving forward. So once again, if the group wants to move forward, I mean, this is a currency, it's a reputable group, it's a reasonable price. Um, you know, if the majority wants to move forward on it, it's fine, but at the end of the day, you know, we're gonna be in the same place. And Mayor, I was listening very closely to something you said about the types of questions and so forth and so on. Um, yeah, that's a customer s- satisfaction survey. You know, so I'll change the paradigm here. Do we really want a customer satisfaction survey? I mean, if you want a customer satisfaction survey, you do that as a point of service, which is town hall. And you ask questions of people that use your service, not people that don't use your service. You say you're gonna get a negative read on, on government because that's the tone out there. And so I'm not sure how useful that is. If you're not pleased with the questions and we move forward on this, I would suggest that this becomes more of a needs assessment. What, what do the community members view as our needs? And what should we be investing money in and what should they support? That is, that has credence to it. But just hearing if someone's satisfied or not, nine out of ten times, you're gonna, you're gonna hook into the mood of, of, of the people you're serving. So I, now I've caught a big wrench into that.
No, I don't think you have. I think you actually bring up what I said, that I, I think we need more significant questions. And I just don't see it here. And I'm thinking that one of these other companies that is not just giving us set questions is, uh, would be more open to, uh, what's more relevant to the community. And I'm not, oh, I'm not saying that we don't wanna put some of those other types of questions in there, but we don't want it to just be a feel-good, a feel-good survey of, you know, hey, what do you think of this?
And you're absolutely correct. What that goes to, and I'm gonna put the ball back into Julie's court, is that goes into scope. It's what, what is the desired output we want from this survey? And to me, if it's a mixture of customer satisfaction and needs, needs is what, what I wanna hear. I wanna, thank you.
Well, I like Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Hanson's idea that, you know, some of these, uh, some of the decisions that have come up have been very controversial. But like someone said, you know, some people do all the talking and the quiet ones don't come forward. So if we wanted to put something in there about our roundabout, we could do it or any of our other controversial issues. And then we would be finding out. And then we would be finding out specifics which would help us in the future to make decisions. Does anyone, Councilwoman Dickey?
Thanks. And when we did talk about this, and we, I thought we specifically didn't want a customer, we did not want a customer service survey that was just people that had actually come in and had to do business or get permits or things like that, that it was more along the line of what it was in the beginning when we were doing strategic planning and trying to figure out what the town wanted to be. So some of those questions too, I mean, this is a science. I, you know, I really don't think that we're qualified to be maybe having some of the input we're having here because the, like some of those questions I'm sure are in there, just like how safe do you feel? They're like almost control questions. And we don't know what goes into this, that's why there's people that make a living doing this. So I'm not opposed to looking at other companies doing that. I would tend to do what Henry is saying in that this one is familiar with what we want, but then I don't. But I don't think it's enough. So I'm okay with looking and going out, but I'm a little bit wondering about the scope of work part rather than just saying, we want a survey of, that's statistically valid of the most people we can in the town of Fountain Hills about where do you want to go and what do you think has happened? And not just like, were they courteous to you when you went into Town Hall? So I don't want us to have to write the scope of work.
Okay. Julie, you want to comment on that?
Um, yeah, Members of the Council, what I just wanted to, maybe what I didn't focus on was the ability to benchmarking. I'm not sure if that's a priority with the council or not. If we use a survey that isn't, you know, either the national standard or one of those what the other cities are doing, then we lose the ability to benchmark. But I don't know if that's important to the council or not, so I just wanted to bring that up. Because if we, you know, create our own questions, create our own scope, then that eliminates that ability.
Okay, well, it seems like it's very hard for me to judge what everybody's saying since everybody seems to have changed their mind considerably. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so good. Okay.
Just very briefly, I still am in favor of spending the money on the survey at this particular point. I think, I know we've budgeted for it. But I think we're making the process a little more convoluted and complex than it needs to be. I think we could probably address the scope and the questions within the company that's recommended that ICMA? Excuse me, ICMA, thank you. And we can do that and not go through the RFP process and then spend staff time and hours going through applications. If the council, if the majority of the council wants to go forward with this survey, should go with the company that's presented there, spend the minimum, the ten thousand dollars, not go through this RFP, creating more workers. As equally important to the town as dollars is staff time. Because we really don't have it. And I hate to, you know, saddle staff with some big project like this that should be outsourced and taken care of in that way. So if the council are going to go forward with this, I would perhaps encourage that route instead of getting an RFP process. Futures and they're coming back and forth, staff doing all this stuff, and it's just a waste of time, I think. Not that getting input from the citizens is a waste of time, but just that process and convoluted.
Well, it just, it just sounds like these other companies do exactly what this company does. And this company, by the way, is taxpayer funded. I don't know if that makes a difference in which one we choose. But it sounds like we had a local company that would be easier to work with. To have someone right here, to have someone show up that we could talk to. Someone that knows the area, someone who's more familiar with Fountain Hills and with this area. These are local companies. I'd like to see this done cheaper than it is. It seems like we have an opportunity with these other companies to get the exact same professional work but at a better price and working with local people who would be better to work with that we could come up with more local issues. So is-
There's a motion and a second, I think.
And your motion, yes, was your motion to just go with this company, another company, or what?
I was asking, I moved to have staff solidify the scope of work and let's do a formal RFP. But I'm hearing, but even with this, it sounds like whatever our, whatever scope that they used on this one, we could keep apples to apples and throw that out there with the caveat of, you know, add some of the local things in there. So again, the motion was to direct staff to issue a scope of work, RFP, to the general, to the market.
Is that, Andrew, is that then to use this company or to put it out after that? So F then could be put out for this?
It's to only put it out for this and to not use ICMA's product.
Okay, all right. To put it out for this.
And to not use ICMA.
I'm not moving to accept this, I'm moving to put it out for this.
To put it out for this. Councilwoman Hanson?
Well, and the scope of work does not have to be that complicated. And I think, as Henry pointed out, we want to specify, we're not looking at a customer satisfaction survey. We're looking at more of how citizens feel, what they feel our needs are, what they feel their priorities are for the community. So I don't think the scope of work would need to be real specific. Of identifying what kind of survey we're looking at doing.
Okay, if the council isn't in mind, we have a motion and a second, if we could just move that along and see where we are. We have no further speakers. And maybe we go with a roll call vote, if they on this one? Thank you.
Mayor, it's time for the vote. I think our deputy town manager asked a question, I don't think she was answered in terms of how important standardization is. And I'd just like to answer a question and tell her that standardization is extremely important. Because that's where you compare apples to apples in terms of how you're doing as a municipality. Right now, if you take municipal surveys in the country or on the federal government or the state government, you get some pretty interesting numbers and you get some pretty low numbers. But then you need to be able to compare that to state, state, state and/or municipality, municipality. And you're right, we're not like Nogales, but we are similar to other communities that ICMA has evaluated, so, thank you.
That's me, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Given what Cassie said about keeping it simple, I say aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luhey?
Aye.
And Mayor Cadman?
Aye.
Mayor Five to Two?
All right, we are.
Where's the Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council.
That's hot.
Thank you. A consideration of an emergency expenditure in the amount of one hundred thousand three dollars for repairs to Suaro Boulevard and Fay Boulevard, including execution of any contracts related to the emergency repair. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. A few weeks ago, we had quite a bit of rainfall and we also had some freezing which did some significant road damage to Suaro Boulevard. And what it created was a safety hazard for our residents. And so the decision was made to go ahead and move forward with passing and fixing up the roads the best we could. Staff wasn't able to keep up with doing, fixing each individual pothole so they had to go in and do some extensive roadwork to it. There was money included in the street budget for, to do some road maintenance and just uses that all up. And other than that, I do have to answer any questions other than related to the roads because Ken is here to answer those questions.
Does the council have any questions for Julie or for Ken?
Mayor, I do have a couple of questions. And actually, they're not my questions, they're resident questions. So Ken, if you would, please. And I want to use my questions as a vehicle, Ken, for you to speak to the residents out there regarding this work that's been done. That's my understanding, and, you know, we did the sand coat to hold things intact and then we came back and did micro-surfacing. And the feedback I'm receiving, and these are questions are being asked, if you could answer them. And once again, they're not my questions. I've had a handful of residents that say, wow, road's looking pretty good. It rides pretty well. Why are we doing a bond? Why don't we just do this to the whole surface? That's a series of questions that I'm receiving and I'd like you to answer that question. The other question is, why are we spending all this money? And I went over the road surface and see, it's not smooth at all. So if you could kind of drill down for us and give us the background, the rationale for why you did what you did and why perhaps it, well, if you could answer those questions, thank you. I'm not going to answer them for you, I know the answer already.
Okay, we, you know, maybe we'll have to tell you how the road deteriorated and the rain is what's, you know, did the last of-
I understand the background. Please explain the treatment and what the limitations, advantages, disadvantages are in the treatment, thank you.
Right, the base is what fails. And what we did is just put a surface treatment on a poor base to hold it for two years. And the two-year mark was, in this process, was selected for, the bond passes, it will be about two years before we actually reconstruct. And if the bond doesn't pass, it will be two years before we have to reconstruct. So I picked the worst of the worst, you know, it's a hundred and sixty-four thousand square yards out there and we covered a total of twenty thousand square yards. So my biggest challenge was to pick out where to paint the stop lines. Because what we didn't hope and surface is going to continue to fall apart. As this will, we just, we had to pick out the worst part. So while we filled the potholes with hot mixed asphalt to make a base, the sand seal was nine feet wide on the driving surface to make a level surface and the micro-surface is the driving, the three-eighth inch thick. We hole that in place. But that's going to crack, it's going to break, because there's no base under. So it's a, it's a two-year temporary fix, hopefully, two years.
Thank you, I think just appearance-wise, some people seem to think, and rightfully saw that maybe a permanent fix. And I think we could just clarify that it's, although it's an enhancement from filling potholes, it still is a temporary fix.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ken? Vice Mayor Elke?
Thank you. Ken, what were the differences, and this is similar questions that I'm hearing as well. Why now and not before? And when I say why now and not before, why is it now an emergency and it wasn't an emergency before? What was the change in circumstance, the condition that warranted an emergency expenditure at this point? Whereas previously, it was sufficient just to fill it with, with material and continue that route?
Two and a half inches of rain. That was it. We can take small rains and fill potholes, but the asphalt adjoining the pothole is still broken up. This case, when we got to Sunday morning, it was, it, the potholes just got too big for us to handle. And we're into the base because there's two inches maximum of broken up asphalt. And of course, as the cars hit them, they get deeper. And we anticipated a good rain was going, this was going to happen. And that's what we got.
Mayor, one other question if I may. There are obviously other potholes that are in town that are affected by the rains that are probably, as we come forward with the monsoons coming up. And I heard that we spent the budget for this particular item. Should we anticipate in the future additional, new expenditures for additional road repairs?
Well, yes, just took care of what we would consider the larger road repairs, but we still have some monies for potholes.
Oh, there are still some monies available for that, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Move the ratified emergency expenditure of one hundred thousand thirty-two dollars for repairs to Suaro Boulevard and Fay Boulevard, including execution of any contracts related to the emergency repair.
Second, and any other thoughts on this?
No, Mayor.
Any other council discussion? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Mayor, seven two.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion with possible directions to staff related to any item included in the League of Arizona City and Town Free City Legislative Bulletin related to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. And Julie or Andrew? Somebody want to take that? Andrew, he's looking at you.
Mayor, Members of the Council, this item is just on the agenda to allow for discussion of anything that has arisen during the week. We know a few things are still chugging their way forward, including the TPT. There's a news conference on scheduled for Tuesday. There's a meeting scheduled with the mayor for Wednesday, which is seemingly backwards. But nonetheless, we should know whether or not something's going to be coming out on that. Some of the other bills have not moved forward much yet, so we don't have a whole lot to report. I believe, I believe Let's Play Bulletin from last Friday is in, it's going to be in your pocket and happy discussing anything in there.
Okay, and yes, I agree with you, the TPT is one of the most important ones for Fountain Hills and would be very detrimental to our town if that is changed, the point of sale for the construction tax. And I have a meeting with mayors and with the league. And we have a lot of support, we have a lot of support. And I think once some of the larger cities came on board, as opposed to that, we are in a better position to fight this with Scottsdale and all the e-ballers on board and along with Sina. So there's going to be more meetings on this. And we just have to really watch this because even if it doesn't come out as a bill, as everybody knows, it could come out in some other form or attached to something else somewhere. So we've got the league watching this and they are on our side, helping us, and that's going to be the difference. Why did I know you wanted to say this?
Oh, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
The, today I had another one of the meetings, my second meeting with the MAG, Domestic Violence. I don't really have a report yet for that, well, next time. But one of the, one of the bills that was on the list here, which was the domestic violence arrest predominant aggressor, twenty-three eighty-two. You know, sometimes with these bills, you're not sure, you know, what people think about it. But everybody there was really in favor of it. So that was something I just wanted to let you know. And then I guess when we have this on the agenda, we're, I guess we're trying to figure out if there are things we want to weigh in particularly and on our own. And the only one I would ask if you wanted to consider is the twenty-four eighty-one permissible consumer fireworks penalty, which Ken had sent us an email and said that the league is opposing. So I think that would be one of those items that if we wanted to weigh in individually or as a council, we could look into that. But I don't actually have a lot of information about that because this was a pretty recent email from him. But that might be something we may want to, from the point of view of this town.
Right, yeah, and I stated the answer, we'll just see where these go. Some of them might just die. And one of the other ones that's mentioned in the League bulletin is that HC two zero zero five, which is, which is just, I believe that's going to make for more transparency. And the league had certain meetings that were closed to the public and there were, so, one mayor in particular who wanted to bring this forward to say that the open meeting voice should apply to them as well and to any other, any other entity like that. So that's another one to watch. And we're done? Okay, then. Motion, let's do it, has anything else? As Deputy Town Manager, anything else you want to move forward?
No, Mayor.
No? All right then, motions are done?
Two points of personal privilege, if that's okay. One is that, I just wanted, in case there was any implied support, I just wanted to make it clear with your announcement at when the meeting began that this council had no prior knowledge or approval or anything like that in the planning of the media event that's going to be at Forest Peak School. So I just wanted to make that clear. And then on a better lighter note is, so Love in the Hills, which is on the fourteenth, obviously Valentine's Day. And I think they're only about halfway there. So they kind of said if you could get a friend, that would get them there.
Does that sound?
Another couple, and they have to bring their, they have to bring their marriage license.
Well, it's kind of have a lot of events around it, so that'd be great just to come. And then the Plaza, and now the fourth joined in also with lots of activities afterwards. And I think that, Councilwoman Dickey, you've got something you wanted to say?
As a point of privilege, I had a couple of meetings with Rick Melendez about some other items. And he had just mentioned that he's been getting feedback saying that people are speeding somewhat on Suaro and just a friendly reminder to slow it down once you come off the B-line. And I find myself probably in that same category. I remember today though, but just to slow it down on Suaro.
He's listening.
He knows.
Is that your number? Yeah, the potholes, slow them down.
Exactly, speed them, thank you, Mayor.
And the Council is bringing- And, and, and the captain is great in responding to that. I know, I had spoken to him about one of the school zones, and next thing you know, the, the guys were out there slowing people down. Some people even don't have to stop in a school zone, and now they know they have to. And, uh, just recently, I also passed along, uh, a, a resident on Golden Eagle said that there's an awful lot of speeding going on there, so the captain's going to look into that. That, I think that grows also, is a problem. People seem to think that you go downhill, speed windows don't count, so... I don't have that, I don't know. That, that would be my husband, you know?
Motion close.
Did I get a motion and a second to adjourn? In a second. Did I get a second? Got one over here. All in favor?
Aye.